On order, an Anzalvi City Council meeting, May 2025. You go ahead and have a moment of prayer.
Father God, I think thank you for today, and thank you for all your blessings. God, we just ask that you would lead, lead God direct us, watch over and protect us, our God, our family, through service, in our PMTs, our firefighters, our police, and more, those who serve. We thank you for your goodness and your mercy, Jesus, my friend.
Make it a motion for the agenda for.
I like a little too many, like, too rough. Thank you, all the favor, for your answers. Okay, can we just hear if there are anybody in the audience that would like to speak with any kind regards to our, um, our events this evening? What can we do? Okay. Okay, then, well, close it in a long time, but we will have our minimum or minimum service in eighteen five, but if they, oh, sorry. And unfortunately, if you're in the middle, uh, April seventh, weekly.
Seven.
All the favor.
Your end, stay here.
Next up is our department, our department reports, Ricky, do you have a word? Cherokee Campbell.
I do not have anything for you guys.
Do you have anything for me? Um, I know that I've got several calls from inside of Orleans, when people drive it off of the roads and all the people's grass and, um, the tampering with silence, things of that nature. But if you have them in any of these, could just give me a call.
Sure, sure.
This week sometime.
Absolutely, um, I, it's not that since like everything's, there was comments and don't had already been fixed, and I'm not, I don't know of any of financial loss or anything like that. Um, from what I understand, everything's been fixed, I haven't heard anything else, but I'll be happy to contact you.
I just wanted to make sure you were aware.
Yes.
Then if we have any issues, then we.
Lot of them are aware of us, as I, well, the council. Yeah.
Finish your report.
I don't have anything for this evening, um, because of the other.
I think. Well, the product, the project, the presentation, I noticed that we work it on.
It's good, and we're gonna, we're gonna discuss a few things, um, regards to Hill City, but we'll, we're gonna do it back, and then go from there. But yes, it's, um, it's been good.
Hill Circle.
Hill Circle, that's right, I said Hill City, absolutely. That too mean, at, I already, uh, they must have, so, they gave, they gave me a new allergy, and they are really petty now for these allergies, and it's, I feel like.
Amen.
Amen, as long as I do, I keep. Yeah, yeah, sure. Next up is a finance report, who's running it?
Yeah. Alright, so this is the statement of, um, running expenditures, rankings are at fourteen point four three percent remaining. They should be sixteen point six six or less, so that's two percent ahead. And expenditures are at twenty nine percent, um, and that should be sixteen point six six working work, so doing good there.
That's right. Grab the check. My raps. I still try. There's an angle.
Yep.
Oh, okay, that's wrong, we didn't, fantastic, because it's a hundred and one, but always, it should have been.
Awesome. And cash reserve funds at a hundred and sixty nine thousand eighty six, uh, Cherokee's boss four is one hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred and forty eight. Cherokee's boss five is nine hundred and sixty seven thousand sixteen hundred dollars. General fund is at one million one hundred and eighty nine thousand eighty eight dollars. Grant fund is at sixty four thousand four hundred and eighty six, and swastika twenty is at one million three hundred and twenty thousand seven hundred and twenty one. That's really all I have, uh. We have several important eggs, and that are connects, but you guys. Yeah, um, between the military, so.
That's fine.
So, I broke the chain, I asked him, so, Bernie, so, okay, as soon as we get that, we'll need to make sure that we did that, and because this is pretty near, and this is pretty tight.
Yeah, but that, like, I didn't get into the line of detail, we started starting to see, to use military force, to do the assessment.
Getting early assessment.
Before we do it, because, um, he suggested we not, the next one.
Uh, he said, do you?
He said, oh, yes, yeah.
If you get reported in, you know, after four, therefore, it's not gonna be a value, so I'll, I'll share with you again, when we.
Sure. Sure. Um, so, yeah, that'd be July, when the June. But it was, well, but it was the print schedule, so it's part of the agenda, or in the chart, it's.
To the public hearings, trying to make.
Uh, we can do the, uh, entire team, that, if you want, or your, your work sessions, I'll meet you as well.
That are accepted then.
John, you need to catch up on the hearing on the second, if I can, so I can have you on the view.
Work session, I think.
One, oh, with you, and I'm a regular scheduling, first, hold on.
Yeah, I'm the only June, so I need help to leave.
That's all right.
The same, I don't think there's how we, we've changed it, so, only a sound thing. We're back to, this is, but.
There's actually a.
Yeah, so do that. Try to mind the difference in shape this.
So, I made, the only, because of your takes, which is about, what's the budget, for, when we get, I mean, that's.
That'll be June the second.
Government hearing, at the same time.
Yeah, what did Irish hand, or two, and same year. Again, in the justice, going to Senate, we done, but we're not gonna, I don't know, we'll do that, shouldn't it?
Trusty.
You. Did I, thank you, that's sharp.
July, so, yeah, so, yeah, so, yeah, I'm getting.
Yeah, and then July will be the, I mean, just to retire this day. Big let's, then we, how will you look?
Yeah, well, yeah.
What we usually, like, Jerkies, uh?
I should get funds for Steve this month, he doesn't, like, tend to make anything, and then they'll release the documents. But I think the latest, this last year, which is like, maybe July tenth or so, I usually think the end of July.
Yeah, the preliminary, then we should be on, go ahead and, yeah. Zero land, they stop at three, then they're, so, so, you know, and that gets free. We had talked about when Seth, the executive fashion, say, that, if they do anything, I know he's giving a report, but, as you know. Well, I also must see.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, the, um, great legendary, little jury, so this one will assess the matters, so, heck, with them, and then set the basis by.
I don't just them for the general, I think, well, one must have proven earlier, and they do, they're, so, but you can't, that is not possible, so, but, so, he's another vacation, to use last years. Right, just for the notice, it was, as long as ever, there wasn't expected of it, but, yeah, that's, that's the thing now, but it's, it just kinda, you got some list to, to, to.
Okay, sure, no, okay. Uh, any questions to Miranda, we've already moved on, is that a question or, will he answer?
Okay.
I'm gonna finish this, we redesigned quote for additional services, add basketball court from there, with the top. We just bring the floor like this on, and we also have, we put back in there, the one for, the third topic, separation. We could be original, kind of was, just over the basketball.
I'll check the white course.
We did that, we put that one back in there, but we separated them, had the request of Chrissy McNeil, um, and, um, then happened, so, we're sure to include, we just need, we need it for the design. For the, yeah.
You want to design your own track, and just keep playing.
Yeah, so, um, I'm gonna get for discussion, Chrissy sent you, um, initiated, Melody, go first.
So, I've been, from the beginning, a proponent of more pickleball courts, I don't play very well, so, it's just our players, not for me. Although, you know what, I probably should at this point, is a, apparently, problem, um. But, it's because people are always asking me, like, about pickleball, of, and it was the number one thing that everybody wanted, when we talked, um, when we asked about what people wanted to learn. And my opinion, the most interesting about pickleball, is that it transcends all genres, from kids to elderly, to, but, like, the middle age now is, like, thirty five. So, which is kinda surprising, um, it's sort of taken over, so.
Yeah, but.
In the beginning, we had the fifty foot setback, so we couldn't fit eleven little walk court, or two, or whatever, it's like, whatever we can do. Um, which is why we discussed, when we discussed, then, when you take the setback, and it's only twenty five feet, now we can fit more of, to me, what people are gonna use, and what they want. So, I just think that it makes sense to do it now, um, because it's just gonna cost money later, if we decide to do it later, or we decide we need to do it later. Um, and I asked Wendy here, who came from pickleball, ironically, um, because she, just to speak about what more courts means, other than obviously having more availability. Um, I think somebody and I already talked about ball ground has four courts.
They do.
They're always full, um, a Daresville has ten courts, they're always full.
When I called general well room, after our conversation, um, ball grounds are booked, so they, they book them, and they're just looked down, so. That's the issue, so maybe people kind of end up, they don't even have.
Right.
So.
And then it's a.
How do you normalize it, does that mean?
I don't think it's a financial issue, I don't think, I don't, I think it's worth spending the money to do it, if that's what the people want, but if it is a financial issue, if that's a barrier, then it will pay for itself.
It could, but.
I mean, it could, I mean, I personally wouldn't really necessarily want it to, but I'm saying, if that, it's one way or the other, either it matters, or it doesn't matter.
At first, we would not wanna see, I mean, we don't offer very much here, I would not wanna see a charge for that, and ball ground is.
No, 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 I mean, I mean, other people, like, we rent a field, or, and people will hate us for those courts.
I know, it's true.
To use that, if that's where, what you want to do, I.
Truly, it's the rip.
Me, if they're full, telling people all the time, cool, fully, for free, I'm not saying you would ever care, do, like, other than, if somebody wanted to do a tournament, then something like that, so, and Wendy, I mean, I, how does that work?
Um, well, I will say, ball ground does charge for you to rent them, so, like, if you wanna walk off of time, they make you pay for that, whether you're a ball ground resident or not, that's just so that you can reserve your time and have those courts, and I don't know, um, what the time period is they offer that, and, or what the amount is, I know they just increased it, which, um, if they, they're supposed to build more courts at ball ground, um, that's in the plan, like, one is a tennis court, that you have to set up temporary nets on, and then the other two are permanent. And so, like, every Monday night, we all pay to reserve them for an advanced group that plays, and I know that some of the people that are in my group live in Nelson, so, like, they live in Laurel Lake, they drive down the ball ground, and have a group, we sort of all drive all the way around. But apart from that, I do think it'll be good, I don't know what your overall goal is, but it will, it will invite people to your community, and it won't be bad people. Um, because the people that I know from pickleball, they are, they love to be involved in community efforts, they do tournaments and raise money for different things, and donate it to the community, and a lot of groups are doing, like, lessons for kids, and, and different things, so I don't think you'll regret it, and I also think that it'll help people, if somebody doesn't wanna live here, and they're selling their house, it will be a plus that you have pickleball courts in your community. Um, so I don't think it'll be negative, for instance, um, the city of Macon, if you wanna live, they've done it on a much larger scale, they're trying to refurbish Macon, like, around the old mall, which was incredibly dangerous, and a lot of people get broken to and robbed when you're there, and so they have moved their county, their, their city offices to that mall, and refurbished a whole, like, what used to be like a Macy's or a Mervyn's, has, like, an incredible amount, incredible amount of indoor courts, that the city is totally running on their own. So, I mean, that's a much larger scale than what Nelson would wanna do, but I don't think you'll regret having more courts, because I really do believe, I, I'm a tennis coach too, and my first inclination, I could take every one of you out, and we could go and have fun playing pickleball, even at a different level, and I could teach you how to play and have fun in an afternoon, where it would take me months to teach you to be successful at tennis. Um, so I think it just spreads across, a lot of people are playing it, and I think it's only gonna get bigger. Um, and she said you might have questions about it, with only four courts, you could do some small tournaments, and little round robins, and people would rent it to run round robins, and invite people in, and do some different things, if you wanted to have a community day, or lessons, or whatever, um, you couldn't do a large tournament there, um, so we, we do a tournament at Ben Tree, but they have six outdoor courts, and six indoor courts, that we run for four days, um, doing that, so it'd be, you know, you could only do some small things with four courts. But people will rent it, people outside the community, I mean, like, for instance, they're gonna be tearing down the courts and ball ground, I know our group would probably love to kind of pay you to rent your courts if they're ready, when they tear apart ball ground, just so we can keep playing. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions about pickleball, if you want me to do.
I like the idea of trying to happen, um, in the summer, because we wanna do something for you, that's my goal, was to, to do, to have something here, for, we have a lot of people that, that can't drive outside the city, right, and so, um, hopefully, when our Macon's barn is converted into a community center, if we wanna do, get some folks in to do, like, paint classes, so, something like that, where we could get folks to come in and, and teach some of the young people.
Yeah, people would be willing to do it. Now, we even did, like, a corporate thing, my friend and I, we both run pickleball companies that are separate from playing pickleball, um, pickleball apparel, and we do a lot of other things, and so, one of the things we did last year, was there was a company in Ball Ground that wanted to have some team building, and we did, like, eight weeks of team building with them, like, one day a week, for, like, two hours, their whole crew came and did pickleball together, and they said it was just transformational for their business, because people who, you know, their boss, and their people who work for them, were on the same playing field, playing pickleball, having fun together, and it really opened up communication, allowing them to see them more as a person, instead of just, that's my boss, and there's a lot of different opportunities to do things like that, and, and really bring the community together, I think, around pickleball.
Thanks, Chrissy.
Thank you. Look at that. Pretty much what I was saying, um, I just, I just think that, if we're gonna do it, we should just do it, but do what the community would like to have, which is what, what people keep telling me, and again, it's not for me personally, because I don't play really well, but I think I probably will now, um.
Definitely several calls, people I've seen very soon.
I mean, it's also, yeah, people have asked me, I don't play pickleball, and they've asked me to put together a pickleball group, organize everybody, and I was like, I don't play, that's okay, we just, we would like somebody, you know, that's kind of involved in the city, and just so that we can see the progress on the part, and everybody, they're just so excited, they're so excited about the pitch.
Yeah, to know, and.
It's insane.
So, let's move to our, let's move to discussion, which will have other, um, passing members taken. What do you have to ask?
Uh, do you care away on that, please, trust board, that's just, that's an undead.
Okay, there we go.
I bet you went over this last month and declined it, didn't you?
Sure. Yeah, we did decline it, and Chrissy brought it back to me again, because she.
Again, the instruction document, which will be rest in the park, are we still waiting to start to?
You have to approve the half pass the ball court, which was in the quote, and so we broke an error, so it's being.
So, I agree to. That's right, did you start it, did you have a, or can?
It was, no, it's waiting on us, so I'll be done at the same time.
Okay, so.
Uh, for man's savings, I did last time, but actually, the design is still like it is, unless finally it gets started on it, you instruct you, you're honest, so.
Then, yeah. Chrissy? Back to you, comes back the year of the ads, though. Let's, let's two, Nathan, and after back, and Nathan again, sections, one, four, not as the end.
Sure. Where you stand, I'm aware of it, before we talk about bias, and.
You think?
Okay.
So, two to one.
Over again, no.
That's the moment, the basketball, he's actually, yeah, that's, that's, but she, she didn't get hurt last night, she wanna get hurt this month, I felt like she got her.
Yeah.
Her, I mean, so, we'll move on, we need to get the, um, we need a motion to approve the design then, for the half pass the ball court at the top, so people, if you're gonna get added, it could come. It is three thousand dollars.
Fine, make the motion, good, we've added that, but let's, the bond draft, get instruction.
Okay.
Yes.
Three thousand dollars.
We a second?
Same.
Same.
From a baby? You know? Okay, so wait, so it's, uh, we don't have the unanimous vote.
This is, oh, yeah.
So. Okay, so here's the deal. Um.
Should cover this thing?
Yeah, that's three, that's, that's three.
But not, so, I thought.
So.
Yeah.
But that's three, we have four, to vote.
Yeah, four.
You know?
Yeah, I know, yeah, they go, it specifically says to vote to require, I didn't, I didn't bring it with.
I know, yeah, yes, do you want to make sure you.
It's our reflection.
If you, I've mattered for some year, but they didn't do it just for, so we got two, four, and then. Yeah, it's the, I'll look at it, make sure, but.
I think that's what's two. So, I'll come, I'll sit there and look at that. She did that day.
Taking him on the play, it's, I'm sorry, I relax, so, probably, I guess, you.
I look.
It should be in the process.
That's a great comeback to this, I think.
Yeah, it's like a little more explanation for, so, I don't, yeah, the charter, the lady says that three votes are required, regardless of how many members you get.
Yes. So, you do have three, yes.
I believe, but I can't, I don't want to accept it.
They're right, now you have to.
So, like, I'll check, y'all talk about something else, and I'll do some fast research.
Okay. Let's move, we'll go to fee, which is equipment replacement, uh, maintenance department, please go for that, this last one. So, um. So, we got boys, we're trading, um, it's a twenty eighteen, about a zero term, um, the Nelson tractor offered thirty five hundred, I don't think they got, like, the young, so, so, then, the other ones, types of batch, so. She now, so, I mean, they offer fifteen, she's striking back, it's always, or we can try, we can.
Option.
Yeah, I can ask, ask, what are you pushing?
So, fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred for grasshopper, um, there it is, it's the first, the first page, if we found that one, so, it's a third page, in estimates, and it's like a little tiny line, you know, if you wanna write, so trade it around to fifteen hundred, Nelson tractor's trading around, so we.
That's.
Or we can try.
Option. Very five hundred.
Yeah, also twenty eighteen.
Oh, sound bad.
Yeah, I do, the odd, everyone, they're kind of.
Or are they still, are they still on that top year?
No, I think they're just, because I was getting through different type estimates, because they get territorial, which, different manufacturers, so, and that's a fact, for sure, but, they didn't, they don't want any, the lawyers, or something, and they have one of it, they gave me this, a lot of someone, because Happy City is a turkey, because I guess this one is chickens, so, it gets hard to get estimates for the same stuff, or the other. And Ricky did say that the grasshopper, which one that has the earliest charge, can skip down like that one, but, again, generally, that was just to avoid stuff shooting out beside the dentary eggs. So.
Can you do, for the Nelson tractor, we're just, we're just, we're just, that's, we're with outfits, already talking, we're trying.
Refresh my, we have three, or, uh.
Yeah, we have three, thanks.
Eight to a dollar, so, I'll just.
Yeah, we're just talking with the release, eight to twenty, and twenty two, yeah, two twenty, twenty two, rate of forty three, because I was saying, eighteen, when we got to. And so. Yeah, so, now, I'm just seeing that, probably need to grow my schedule, so we, keep our launcher twice, it gives us the main thing that we have.
Yeah.
So, um. You go about me, so.
I would say good deals, but, I mean, thirty thousand, I don't know. It's gonna be twice to the time.
They are.
And then, when we just sell the truck on good deals, and go, like, kind of war out, drink, yeah, like, you price it, I'm forty five, I suppose. Thirty five, that's bad for seven year old.
That's how I think.
Either.
Sure was higher than just the family. Yeah, first, they're trading, but I think that'd be done on business, so it's then doing business back, so if you might be out. So, we actually tried to buy the trails from a different company for last, when they were back ordered for so long, being up just here, on here, and I see drivers, you know, but they are, like, licensed, though, and they're crazy, you know, but tired of listening, like, buddy, I'm too very old, cause, but they were too haves, and, it's more, it is less, and, after what, they went, like, eight, eight hundred, but you still, now, it's like, yeah, maybe they're selling, they're, they're, but it, I'll check, with the, with I. Check, check section two point four. Okay.
Well, or looking for.
Two point four, one, I think, about.
I have three. The chart.
Let's go ahead with this one first, so, trying to get a motion to approve the, um, trade, the thirty five hundred, I'm gonna, probably, um, to about a zero term more from the Nelson tractor, and, uh, spend the, go show the highs, uh, sticking seven.
I'm like, wish. Took her, tried again, purchased it, and it was.
Okay, wait, send. First, we're a second. Up, send it, here's see. Okay. Left, left. Be steady. You wanna go there? Councilman, you're going there?
Stupid.
Are you going there, you're not gonna vote now? Because you got voted, you, because she didn't vote for the.
The people that put me in this thing, the people that put me in this thing.
Is there a pending motion?
Yeah.
Pending motion, and a second, the firmly votes been called, making it was not been called.
There's a pending before, because we went forward with this one, at his request, that, 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 sure, it's.
Not you. All right, vote, call for a vote.
For which one?
Let it, you just vote.
I need, um, um, Nathan and Christie vote, um, I call for a vote for, uh, the equipment replacement for the maintenance department, for the Nelson tractor, for fifteen seven. And Christie gave a first.
Who's in favor? Who's against?
Two to one.
Next one. So, let's answer the question. Uh, in the charter, if you ever write anything else. I just, I think they said you're right, it's like, I'm stuck with the charter lines. What about the charter, here's what it says. Maybe poorly written, but this is how it is written, if you have a four, capital numbers, if you have three, it takes three people to vote on something.
Yes.
If for some reason you got down to two, then it does say you can still, two can find a way to vote, but if you have three. She's out of the meat, you can still vote two. Uh, one of us three was out of the meat, so, yeah, well, it says if vacant teams result, it doesn't, yeah, like, vacant teams result in less than three council members, I guess, two to vote, if they voted against each other, I think would happen. So, it takes three to vote, it does, it take three, the firm does, pass, it does, it does, when you have three council members.
Sure does.
On the against. You got, you have a four, and so what the charter says, is if you have a four, it takes three to pass, if they.
One.
Maybe that's poorly written, and that's what it says, but that's always, I knew it said that, because we kind of come up, and people are out, but we, but, not with this situation, or you only have three of you, but it just says, but it says, to. But it says three council members constitute a court. Therefore, you can transact business, but three votes are required. Then the affirmative vote of three council members shall be required to get adoption of anything. Says right now, you all have to agree. To get. To get up.
Yes.
It's like. Or is this?
Carl, so we want to bring on. We need to go back and we need their reboot on the on the. This is of the third designs.
Okay, all. And I think it sounds like. We need to pass on a couple of things unless y'all find a compromise that everybody can bridge. Otherwise, the things don't pass. Neither neither motion has passed so far, so.
I think the other people on explanation why the tractor is not going through. That's needed for the city.
That we have. I need proper in this good quiet enough. The certainly we were punished by David. Chad this huh?
You voted for it. Last month.
That's me.
That just start coming out and quick. What about last?
We did. The only thing that was holding us up was to find out what the um what the the value, what the trade in was and how we were gonna do this trade in or if we were gonna put it on gov dot com.
People change their minds, I guess. Yes.
Very disappointing. We'll let the motion stand for it. The decision stands for movement to executive decision, but my request is that you two find a way to figure out what's going on here. And for our next meeting, we need what's right for this. Can I get a motion to it?
Yeah, I do.
I'll put that one in the box. I'm exposition. Go ahead back to nine business physical year twenty six budget.
I'm looking so for one guy. The draft of it. He says he does a decrease and three percent to his property tax. And then uh in the yellow column, you'll see anything that is reducing it is in parentheses and anything that is yeah. Increasing is a five split. So it's twenty one thousand and ten dollars that it's deep. Um, any of the answers gets offset basically by the fire taxes, which is the fire tax away. Um. So ultimately, the increase is about two million dollars. Um, overall, the widget is offset by the. Um, fire tax they think it down.
I'm not sure the math has to worry.
Um, fifty two thousand was what it was for those.
The total issue would have been worth six, probably. He said they were in a word. Uh, the end of the B and O was just clearly some. So you got them.
But I would.
Fifty two thousand. Yeah, that's fifty seven. So based on last years.
Our tax.
Our time. We're not suddenly that old, but I saw it was the number.
The actual.
The overall part national person this year and is occupied to do that.
Good job, man. The feature map. Okay. Big inside. That was really the the out with reduction there where we reviewed the fire checks because they were already good checks out. So. Good job, me. Check them out. Appreciate it.
Well, it just takes a couple beers.
I think anything. Have you ever been that far? Like on citizens?
Not a lot, huh?
Anybody that does it? Like the water. That's a big challenge.
There is a challenge. It's like semi professional like like and you take something.
Right, exactly.
When you've just been a train length, Alabama. They change the song guys that you would and um review it. Come back with any questions.
So the final vote is.
Serious.
It is. Yeah, a lot.
Yeah, we'll have a second reading and then we'll what then we'll go on.
Yeah, we're looking at it. I want to say.
Jake.
Tonight.
Different than the models tell us. I know.
Yeah, I think there was that's that's different than what you on email.
Yeah, she is.
We've changed time this time. The fire tax is the beginning of that change. Because I didn't get that.
Yeah, those fire tax is the same.
Yeah, one is pointless. Yeah.
Uh, and it's it's it's.
This is. Stuff. So I'm gonna ask you that and say the code of religion. Why is that a change in this thing?
So it is.
Questions that you may have, just go ahead and reach out to bring your job.
Any any that you see.
Yeah. They read it. I'm trying to go on. I'm like, so most on again. So good job of that.
We're sending a valley. We should go on to this.
Do you drive over?
I would try the first one. It's like, I don't know. Do you stand?
And he was trying to give it a nervous that you want. I don't think it's.
City. Oh. Obviously. And then I don't know. She's twelve. I'll say like today she would um I did not that I love this. A little matter because I thought the other one just.
Yeah.
I'm upset. So the bottom line of channel.
The word. She backed up.
So they went up on you. So that gets tough to see.
That's the question. Need a motion moving exactly.
That should talk. But it worked.
Yeah. Yes, um, and these uh, about the need of second please.
Any.
Here's see.
Yeah, just.
To any of our favor here. Um, voters have.